I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, July 9th, 2024, here in Palm Desert. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, my nation under God, and to this whole, whatever it is, justice for all.
Uh huh, good timing. Good morning. I was waiting to do roll call. All right, roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you, all president.
Nice to have everyone here. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir.
All right, moving on. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Don't see any. Wow. All right, I've already looked at all this. We have the consent calendar, items 5A through I. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5O approved. All right, this gets us to 7A, which is our public hearing on the domestic water service and sewage and waste serviced availability assessments for Riverside and Imperial Counties. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments to be assessed for fiscal year 2425 through collection on the tax rolls. Making the presentation this morning is Albert Galindo, accountant. Good morning, Albert.
Good morning.
Hi.
Within district numbers 6, 7, 8, 18, 19, Service Area 35, the amount of the levy is $10 per year.
For each parcel of land, or $10 per year for each parcel of land less than an acre for domestic water service availability. Within district numbers 10, 13, 14, and 15, the amount of the levy is $30 per year for each acre of land, or $30 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre of domestic water service availability. Within district, approved in district number 11, the amount of the levy is $23 per year for each acre of land, or $23 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre for domestic service water availability. Within all sanitation improvement districts, the amount of the levy is $30 per year for each acre of land, or $30 per year for each parcel of land less than one acre of sewage and waste service water availability.
This is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on the proposed domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments in Riverside and Imperial Counties for the fiscal year 2425. Clerk Bermudez, have we completed proper notification of this hearing?
Yes, Mr. President, we have. The proper notification of this hearing was advertised in the Desert Sun and Imperial Valley Press.
Counsel, you have comment?
Yes, Mr. President, this public hearing is being held pursuant to a notice duly published in newspapers required by law within counties subject to the annual domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability assessments for fiscal year 2024-25. These assessments are unchanged from previous years. The report containing the description of each parcel of land within the district upon which the assessments will be imposed has been filed with the clerk of the board.
Great. All right, at this time, I declare the public hearing open, and will request that those wishing to speak, please give your name, property, location, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Very quiet. All right, so I don't see anybody wishing to comment, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing with no, with no further comments. I declare the hearing closed. Clerk Bermudez, have we received any written communications regarding the availability assessment?
No, we have not received any written communications.
Okay. Counsel Frey, will you comment on the public hearing?
This public hearing has been held as required by law. The board has given the property owners the right to be heard. All legal requirements have been satisfied, and the board can now proceed in making its decision on the establishment of the domestic water service and sewage and waste service availability charge assessments to be collected on the tax rolls.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adopt Resolution 24, I'm sorry, 2024-27, a resolution to levy domestic water service and sewage and waste service available assessments and authorize transfer of assessments to fiscal year 2425 county tax rolls.
So I'll make a motion just for the purpose of conversation.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I know we see this every year, and I might have asked this question already, but trying to refresh my memory here, so when we, and I get that this is availability charge, right, so that means that the parcels aren't receiving service, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and that's why it's so small?
Yes.
But the infrastructure's in place?
Yes, that is correct. They are within a certain feet from them.
Okay, so that, I think that answered my first question, because I was trying to figure out if there was some sort of balance that we were trying to pay off, but that's not related to that, that's simply for the availability.
Correct, all availability goes to our operations.
Thank you. And then, the other thing that I just wanted to point out is, and this is just a general comment, and it's for the board, is, for example, when you take, when you take the area of North Shore, which I see is highlighted here in orange, I think that in general, I don't know if this would apply to every scenario, but I have been aware that there are scenarios where perhaps we wouldn't allow a connection to the line, because there isn't capacity at the treatment plant that that flow goes to. So, so that's something that I think we ought to consider, is there really availability? So I think, you know, that's just a comment for Jim, for engineering, is, how do we, how do we answer that question, or how do we, you know, how do we consider that, you know, when we think about these things? So, I'm not sure if that's the case in any of the other assessment areas, where, where folks wouldn't be allowed to, to connect because of a, of a capacity at the treatment plant, or even at the pipes. I'm just wondering, I know this particular area because I, you know, I'm familiar with it, so, something to think about, I think, as we continue to do this. That's it, that was my only comment.
Okay, thank you.
So we do have a motion in a second to adopt this resolution, and we can just vote, right? It's not a roll call. Okay, then, in that case, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So 4-1?
No, no. I'm with the, I'm with the yeses, but.
All right, I was too quick for you.
Yeah, you're too quick, but, no, but seriously, I'd like to get more information on that, I think that's something that we ought to think about.
Well, let me at least take a stab at it. I think, so long as there is any opportunity for people to collect, we charge the availability. Once there is no more capacity, that's when we would stop. To stop for, to stop while there is still capacity would be then an arbitrary, we'd decide who pays and who doesn't pay, and that gets a little bit more dicey. So I think as long as there is capacity, and I'll have to validate that, I'm pretty sure there is, or we wouldn't be charging the availability assessment, because to me, when it gets to the point that there's no more capacity for anybody to hook up, we've got a moratorium then, so we shouldn't be charging availability.
Okay, that's fair, we could follow up later, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, to me, to me, it raises the question, let's say that they're the next person after the, the last one connects, right? So they've been paying for 10 years, and now they say, I want to connect, and we say, well, sorry, there's no capacity. I mean, do we have a mechanism to refund the availability charges that they've been paying?
I would say no, because they had the ability to connect. It's once the capacity is exhausted or fully occupied, that's when I think we should stop the availability assessment against anybody who is not yet connected.
From that point forward.
From that point forward.
Okay.
But, but as long as there's capacity, it's their choice to connect or not to connect. It's when they can't connect that we shouldn't be charging.
That makes sense.
Fair enough, okay.
Thank you.
So on to the action calendar, 8A is the, the non potable connections for these three places. Armando, good morning.
Good morning. President Powell, members of the board, audience, fellow staff, my name for the record is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department, and we're here to seek your support, and we're recommending that the board waive the material deviations in TE Roberts' bid and authorize the general manager to execute a construction contract with TE Roberts as the lowest responsive bid, response, lowest and responsible bidder for the construction of the Marriott Shadow Ridge Low Pressure, and the Emerald Desert Water, Non-Potable Water Pipeline Projects, specifications number 2022-42, and the amount of $16,588, 16, 16 million, 588,216, and approve additional expenditures for a total request of $21.1 million. Just like the board before, we, this is a great opportunity to continue our non-potable water project expansion within the WRT10 area. This pipeline will be able to, this offsite non-potable pipeline will be able to connect the Marriott Shadow Ridge, Emerald Desert, but most importantly, also will help support the future expansion of WRT10, a low-pressure non-potable system, which are mostly all the customers that you see here in yellow along Frank Sinatra. And, and just, as previously said, this project will connect Marriott Shadow Ridge, Emerald Desert, on the offsite pipelines, but it will also allow us to add capacity to the existing pipeline network, so that we can support the customers on the low-pressure system. And those customers are Suncrest, Branch and Mirage, Contino Development, Annenberg, Tamaras, Desert Island, and Springs Club. The construction will reduce the reliance on groundwater for turf irrigation, and definitely will protect the groundwater from overdraft. We're estimating a total water supply of about 2,489 acre feet for the two customers, Marriott and Emerald Desert, and we think that there'd be an additional non-potable demand, an amount of 5,525 acre feet per year for the other nine customers. It has taken some time for us to develop the design, get the environmental complete, and most importantly, seek funding partners, not through loans, grants, and we believe, we have been able to fund, find these sources, and so we're trying to see if we can fund the project with a Pago of 3.9 million, Clean Water State Revolving Fund of 12.9 million, and then happy to report, there's a wind grant funding amount of 4.8 million. And we anticipate this can be a multi-year project, so for this year, we have 9 million to construct this project, and then the rest to be added to the next future budgets. Let me pause to see if there's any questions before I continue with my presentation.
And you know, Armando, I know we've seen this several times, I'm just looking at the colors on this map that's on the screen, and the furthest south, that's the Phase 2, it's kind of a peach color. Marriott Desert Springs North, is that one not connected right now? It, you see what I'm saying, it's kind of at the end of that north-south line that's yellow.
North-south, Marriott Desert Springs North, yes, is not connected.
They're not connected now.
That's a customer that, to me, is my Disneyland, if I can get that customer connected, that'd be awesome, because it's so visual to Country Club and Cook, you have a lot of green turf, that'd be nice to have that connection. It's on our plan to connect, all these facilities are sized to connect, it has a huge non-potable water demand, and, but there is some concerns that the customer has voiced to us.
Oh, because of the lake?
One is the lake, second one is their very famous flamingos that they're, they're concerned about, and also their distribution system within, it's a little bit more complicated than, than most, and so they are concerned that the lake and the internal lake that goes into the lobby, there is, there's a major concern there, but we're working with the customer.
No, I know, I'm just, so there, is that, that lake's connected to their irrigation system?
They believe it is, and they're trying with the limited budget that they have, to try to find ways so that they can separate them. So we'll get there, it's in our plan, and we're sizing all these improvements, especially the, the Cook Street pipeline, we're sizing that so that when they're ready, we're ready to connect as well.
Okay, all right, yeah, I mean, it is a very visible, it's really kind of an amazing project, you know, it was built a long time ago, but to, the idea of having this, this giant lake, you know, with boats, you can take a boat to the restaurant, you know.
That, that was my initiation to, to Coachella Valley many, many, many moons ago, and how awesome that I'm able to come back and live here, and then do something so wonderful as to connect them to non-potable water.
So, so most likely that the lake that goes in and out of the hotel with the flamingos and all that, that, that would be, still stay on groundwater?
Yes, I believe because of the way non-potable is, and the way the enclosure of the lake inside the lobby, they really want that to be just.
Yeah, no, I don't blame them.
Is that where Aqua is this year?
Yeah.
It's at the Marriott Desert Springs, yeah.
Armando, can you, can you, I have a question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the bid's 16 and a half million dollars, that was the lowest one, can you explain where the other $5 million is?
Yes, we, in addition to the 16, a big chunk of the difference is, we have to amortize the, we have to make sure that we account for the loan interest, so that's 2.2 million in regards to the loan that is in 30 years, and is, I think is 1.1%. And then the other big chunk is contingency, that we got close to about a million dollars in contingent, 829,000, but the rest of, the other is just soft costs, the cost for us to do the project, which is project management, the 400,000, we have hired veneer construction management, who have done, done a great job in regards to keeping us in check in regards to all the requirements associated with the state revolving fund, like, we had to do interviews, we had to make sure that the payroll's correct, to pay our wage, so they're helping us to do that, and that's 262,000. And then we have ongoing engineering that we still have to do, with engineering support with Craig or Stewart, of 300,000, and then we have to do soil, soil testing as we put these pipelines on.
So did the, did the engineer who did his estimate of 14 million dollars include all these extra costs in there?
Um, no.
You know, you're all concerned that, that, you know, we're budgeting 14 million, and then the cost, the, the, the project's actually costing us 21, when, you know, I understand that the engineer's estimate was 14 million, and the bid, the lowest responsible bid came in at 16 and a half, and that's two and a half, okay, we can, we can deal with that, but this is a big increase.
Yeah, the, the estimate that engineers did was just for the hard cost associated with the pipeline, all the other soft costs, that's something that we developed when we started doing the design, to come up with the total cost.
But don't we have these soft costs in every, in everything we do?
There.
I mean, besides the loan, which is 1%, it's $2 million over 30 years, that doesn't make up the extra $3 million, so there's another 2 and a half million dollars in there of soft costs, right?
Yeah.
But don't we have those in other projects?
Every time we execute a project, there's always project management, geotechnical engineering support, so those, those soft costs are always there as part of our execution of a project.
This one just seems a lot higher than normal. I mean, I don't, I don't.
Did you look at the bid register? I mean, it's, these guys were lower than the others, too.
No, I understand.
There were, there looked like some good bids, I mean, from good companies, but.
I'm not worried about the bid, I'm worried about the extra spread between the 16 and the 21, that's what I'm, that's what I'm questioning.
Well, it is itemized there in the, in the memo.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
So at the risk of sounding like a broken record, the DBE numbers on this contract are incredibly low, pathetically low, actually, less than 1%. I know Jim's gonna say that we don't do quotas, and I get that, but the loan requires that the contractor make best efforts, he failed to publish in the major journal that a DBE provider would, would see these contract listings, and I continually do not understand why these numbers are so low, and would like to hear your take on this.
I would love to see these, personally, as an engineer, and have a lot of families who are in the construction industry, would love to see these DBE numbers high. It is, yes, it's, it's, I am disappointed as much as you are when I see not a 2% or 3% to this very significant $60 million. I really don't have an answer for you, Mr. Director Aguilar, in regards to why these are low, but there have been consistently low, even though the contractor does advertise them on trade journals to get the maximum exposure for project, but, but I can tell you, based on me relying on family that, that is in the construction industry, that there are DBEs, they're really busy, it's a really busy environment, and it's hard to get a quote out, because the workload is so high. It might, that might be an effect, I'm not quite sure, but what we can do, we can definitely try to reach out, or at least me, when there's another project, at least to get the word out, that, you know, there is.
No, I get all that, but I mean, this is, this is a pattern, and the thing that I don't understand is that the, the loan requires, it says right here, the loan requires good faith efforts, so what does that mean, what does good faith effort mean to you?
To me, it's, as the project managers, that the contractor has to be able to advertise and get the word out, and I think to the letter of the intent, intent of the letter, I think the contract has done that in this case, he had published in two journals, not local ones, but definitely, Bit America and Daily Reporter are definitely well circulated, really established.
Okay, thanks.
And, and I just may, might add that I have folks that help staff with the loan documents and the construction documents and review of the bids, I don't have that in front of me in terms of what the standard is that the state is looking for, for the grant, but I can certainly report back to you on what that criteria is and what they consider to be compliant.
No, it's unnecessary, John, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that it doesn't seem like, I've worked on these types of projects myself, and it doesn't seem like the state requires much, they call it a good faith effort, and mostly about publishing, and I've also worked in other projects where the program actually requires you to have a goal, so they'll say, hey, you'll need to have like 10% or 25%, and so that forces the contractor to, to try to meet that goal. Here, they don't, they don't have a goal.
Yeah, but I mean, a big part of this job is moving dirt, and I fail to believe or understand why there aren't a pool of folks out there that could do this work that are qualified under this category, so, I mean, I don't want to, you know, belabor this and let's just move on, I support the project, but, you know, you're, I'm not going to shut up about this. Thank you, thanks, John.
Thank you. All right, so we are at the point where we would entertain a motion to approve 8A?
Just, just to confirm, we have the loan?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, is there a motion to approve 8A? So that we can connect where non-potable, I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm, I'm in favor.
Been working on this for a long time.
We have.
All right, so there's a motion in a second, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's 5O, any opposed?
Thank you.
5O, pass, thanks, Armando. Receive and file the cost service and rate study reports for canal water, east white water replenishment, and west whitewater and Mission Creek replenishment funds.
Good morning. Finance has several items for you today.
That's true.
I'll kick us off. On Zoom, we also have Mr. Michael Colentano, and then also Eric from NewGen, the rate consultant, should there be any questions that I need some assistance answering. This has been a couple of months of work, started before I became your finance director, but definitely a, a good achievement here, a milestone to get to this point. The key priorities in reviewing the cost of service studies was to maintain the affordability of our water replenishment rates, meet the ongoing operating expenses and reserve requirements within each one of the funds, we wanted to make sure that we included operating CIP expenses balanced with what we consider moderate rate impacts for your consideration in the future. We also reviewed assumptions and validated the 2023-24 rates for the fiscal year that just ended, and we provided a four-year financial forecast within the reports going through fiscal year 27-28. Some of the actions that we took in order to develop these reports was reviewing all of the revenue sources and sales projections within each one of the rates, we updated the expense projections, also validated them against the currently adopted budget, just for a second review, and we have annual cost escalations, which are also noted within the staff report for each one of the funds, and we tried to leverage the prudent use of reserves when necessary to fund the major CIP projects. So we have the three different rate studies, the first one is the Canal Fund, what you can notice here is, is the different rates through fiscal year 28, the column in green is the numbers, the rates that we adopted with our current fiscal year budget, just recently in June. What you can note here is that all of these rates that were adopted are below the current prop to 18 amounts, and then also, current prop to 18 amounts that are, prop to 18 rates adopted, and then also below the fiscal year 25 test year numbers. Current prop to eighteen amounts that are prop to eighteen rates adopted, and then also below the fiscal year twenty-five test year, um, numbers. Uh, the canal fund does not include any revenue increases or rate increases within the rates themselves. And the surcharge increases maintain the full cost recovery of providing those services. And those would be like the scheduled gate, uh, visits or unscheduled ones, and the quagga surcharges as examples. For the canal fund, we do have capital improvement, um. Plans within, uh, for some lateral irrigation, lateral improvements. They are funded by two U S B R loans, which total about fifty, total fifty-seven point six million dollars once fully, um, expended. Over a thirty-year period is the repayment at a one point eight percent, um, interest rate. And so the debt service within, uh, to repay those loans is included within the rates as well. As for reserves within the canal fund, you'll note here, the reserves are fully funded, they are actually, um, over the designated target. The item that is really pushing that is the curtailment revenue. You recall, that's one-time revenue, um, being provided to the district, forty-two million dollars total. The objective or the, the study itself, um, anticipates us using some of that curtailment revenue to offset rates. That is something that the board can decide every year as you adopt rates with the budget, uh, process. But that's what's pushing, um, the designated reserves to be over the targeted amount. If we go on to the east replenishment fund, again, same concept here. Uh, the rate again that we have adopted for fiscal year twenty-five is below the forecasted fiscal year twenty-five cost of service study rate. There is a three percent annual rate increase anticipated for the east replenishment fund. Again, something the board would need to, um, determine and analyze each year with the budget process. There is some, um, E C I P, uh, capital improvement projects for replenishment projects included within this fund. And then we also do have a debt service coverage ratio that is required, uh, for the certificates of participation from the twenty twenty-one issuance, um, included within the rates here as well. It's for the O S A races project. As for reserves within the east replenishment fund, you'll note to the right there, um, this fund is actually under the reserve target for the first three years. Whenever, um, the fund is under the reserve target, you have five years to bring that back up to the target, um, level, and that is. Um, anticipated to be completed by the year twenty, twenty twenty-seven within this fund. Under the west replenishment fund, um, again, we have the current adopted rate at a hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents, which is lower than the forecasted. Fiscal year twenty-five rate of a hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, also a three percent rate increase anticipated within the rest, west replenishment fund. There's no external debt within this fund. And, uh, but there is one inter-fund loan due to the domestic fund, uh, which matures in twenty thirty-eight. And those repayments are included within these rates as well. And the one, uh, project noted there for Palm Desert ground replenishment facilities for Warptown. The reserves, again, within this fund, um, are also below the designated target level. For the first three, sorry, four years in this case, um, and then a reestablishment of that target level by the year of twenty twenty-eight. Mission Creek is included within the west replenishment report. Um, on this particular, um, slide, it's just one slide. The new gen recommended rate towards the middle there, the hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents, is the current adopted rate. The number on the top, the cost of service study rate, is the maximum rate that is justified based on the study. Um, the district has adopted a lower rate because, as you notice at the bottom there. The ending fund balance is quite healthy for this particular fund, and so we intend. To incrementally utilize the reserves and avoid a rate increase within the Mission Creek Fund. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the studies themselves, but not to issue a new prop to eighteen notice. We have a couple of unresolved litigation matters pending that are due to be, um, have final resolution in the fall of twenty twenty-four. And that could significantly change the reserve balances within each one of these funds. And in addition to that, our current prop to eighteen rates do not expire until July twenty twenty-five, which would allow us to utilize those current rates. For, um, the upcoming fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And so we would recommend, um, redoing the studies depending on what happens with those legal matters. Um, and, um, and then, and then redo a prop to eighteen notice at that time, in about a year. Happy to answer any questions and.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, um, Michael and Erica are also on the line.
Great, thank you, Carla. All right, uh, is there any question or comment from the board? Appreciate the effort that went into this, to get it. Done relatively due to the process for you to, to see it through. I appreciate your work.
You did a good job.
So you would recommend a motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Second.
All right, um, with no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed five oh. All right, so on to, um, C, which is the state water project levy.
David Lacy, our finance manager, will be taking the next two items.
Great, David, okay. Good morning.
All members of the board, um, before you is the annual process that we have, um, after a budget adoption to take the state water project tax late, um, levy. Resolutions, um, so that we can go ahead and assess those for Riverside and Imperial County. Um, as we discussed within the budget, um, study sessions and adoption. We're not recommending a change to the rate, so that would still be eleven cent per hundred of assessed value, um, assessed this year. Um, that would generate what we're expecting is approximately ninety-six point eight million in revenue that would. Pay for the obligations for the fund as well as funding, um, the reserves, and happy to discuss any other questions.
I, I don't have anything. Same, same rate we've been. Have in place already. Is there a motion to approve or adopt this, uh, levy?
It's the same.
Same.
Same rate.
Yes.
Same rate, and we do revisit this each year as with through budget development to take a look at what is needed for that rate, and so we'll be. With feature costs as well, looking at that for this next, uh, forecast period as well.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve resolutions twenty-four, twenty-eight and twenty twenty-four, twenty-nine.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passed five oh. All right, then on to these other resolutions. Go ahead, Dave.
So I'll take the assessment districts too then. So yeah, the next item is the annual, um. Process that we have to, to levy the rates for the three assessment districts and one community facilities district for the district here. Um, we basically go through this process with Webin Associates, our consultant on this each year to. Analyze the need for the three assessment districts, which do have existing debt service. And then also for the facilities district that, um, has basically, um, ongoing maintenance costs for those, um, pieces. So, uh, we have the budgets included in the materials, um, we meet with, um, the board for the facilities district each year to analyze the costs that they need. And this is the process of making sure we can get those on the tax roll.
Thank you.
And I would recommend a separate motions because these are separate charges for separate areas under separate assessment districts.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, um, for approving.
Item one.
Item one, which is the, uh. So we can do all three assessment districts in one?
Yes, correct. Item one and then separate, I would request item one and then separately item two.
So I'm guessing that's resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty?
Correct.
For the assessment districts?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
I'll move, uh, approval of, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty for the collection of funds. Needing debt service and other obligations for assessment districts thirty-three, sixty-eight and seventy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, with the motion a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Passed five oh. And then for the second one, I'll entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one.
Again, I'll make the motion for, um, resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one. For the collection of funds required to meet the cost and administrative obligations for. C F D number one oh two.
Second.
Go ahead.
Question, um. I do see here the outstanding balances. Thank you for that, um. On District. One oh two.
Is your mic on, sir?
Thank you for that. On, um, District one oh two, it says the levy will continue until twenty, uh, two thousand two hundred and one. That, that's a typo.
And it's actually not a typo, so they extended this and was before my time when this was set up, but that actually is in the agreement, so, uh, it's an obligation that's.
Wow.
Well beyond me.
What, what's the year?
Two thousand two oh one. Twenty-two oh one.
Right. I don't think I'll be around for that, but.
Is that, that's not a typo, is it?
It's not a typo, no. It was set up with that date at this point, is my understanding, and I'm not sure if there was a particular reason for that, but, um.
It's over a hundred years.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can certainly go back and check.
That's normal, that's, uh, normal practice.
Yeah, I, my understanding is it's the correct number, but I haven't researched that to know, to give you a definitive answer on that, but that is, I believe, what's in the stated agreement, so that's. The material we usually have on this.
Yeah, I would just ask you because most of them are twenty years, thirty years.
Right, and those are, those are related to the debt obligations for the assessment district, so that's when we have issued debt, the term of those, um, obligations are a little bit smaller. This one, because it's kind of an ongoing piece for, um, operating maintenance, things like that, upgraded the facilities, so I think it's just more of a. Long-term process for that area to be able to deal with those costs over time.
Yeah, I guess it's better for us.
This is probably a two-hundred-year agreement or something, a two-hundred-year, uh, facility? Wow.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
A good question.
All right, so where are we on the motion here?
Nelson and I go.
We have a motion, a second. All right, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed five oh. Okay, Calpers, yeah, thanks. Let's get Calpers, Carla.
Here we go. Good morning again, board members. Um, today, we don't have a formal presentation for this item. Um, it wasn't brought to the board last year, but I thought it was important to discuss it. I know we talked about it during budget study sessions. Calpers is a large liability, um, and we are requesting to pay the lump sum payment again this year. We did work with Chandler Asset Management to do some projections. Um, last year we did do the monthly payments, um, because the interest rate earnings were, um, still fairly strong. We are anticipating, uh, rates to. Decrease maybe twice within next fiscal year, but, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, um, but that is the, the anticipation, and even. If we do the lump sum, we would earn, um, ninety, about ninety-two thousand dollars less of interest, um, instead of sending it over to Calpers. Um, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that Kurt Schneider, our actuary from Calpers, is also on the line, right Sylvia? Um, and I'm happy to go over the actual report, um, if you'd like at a very high level, um, I do have that queued up as well. Um, we'd like to do the initial lump sum payment. The other recommendation is for us to continue to explore the additional discretionary payments. Um, recognizing that Calpers has volatility within their investment rates of earnings, um. We'd like to maybe explore with Calpers sending a portion of that to additional discretionary payment to Calpers. And maybe similar to the O P E V trust, opening up a section one fifteen trust for pension and, um, putting a portion. Of that additional discretionary payment in a one fifteen trust, that gives us more flexibility in how we utilize that. And the investments that are selected within those, um, that fund as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and or to go over the report if you'd like.
Carla, I have a question on the one fifteen trust. So do we currently have that fund in place now, or is that a new? And explain to me how it works and how the rate differs and.
It would be new. We have one for the O P E V, which is our other post-employment benefits for retiree, um, health benefits. And that is at about a ninety-six percent funded ratio as of last fiscal year. Um, has about thirty-three million dollars in that particular fund. This would be completely separate, only for pension, uh, retiree benefits. This would be an additional, um, section one fifteen trust. It can be included as a separate and a sub-account within the current account. There are three different agencies that have a section one fifteen trust available for selection. They have different administrative fees, which is something we don't want to look at. There's one under PARs, Calpers, and then also P F M. Our current one is with P F M. And so there, there could be some language or some amendment, contract amendment to add a second one with P F M, just for pension. Um, or we could go with one of the other providers as well, depending on what their returns look like. You want to look at their historical returns, maybe a ten-year average, the type of investments. Um, even within the O P E V trust, you could have a very, um. Lower rate of return with less, um, maybe money market investments all the way up to something that's a little bit more stock-driven. Um, it's not based on the current portfolio, uh, or investment policy. We do have a separate policy also for the O P E V trust, so we would have to develop one as well for a pension trust, um, with board's guidance. And so that's something we, again, we would like to do over the next couple of months, to figure out if that's, um, a way to, to fund the unfunded liability. And you asked about some of the benefits, so some of the benefits of the one fifteen trust is that, similar to the O P E V trust, we're able to draw down some of those, um. The cost to, uh, reimburse ourselves, should we desire to do that. Or we can utilize some of those funds to pay the unfunded liability on an annual basis, a portion of it. Uh, to again, not utilize, um, maybe our reserves or our current rates, um, if there ever is that need. Um, it also is really good for our credit ratings. It shows that we are paying down a, a debt or, um, setting aside funding that is intended for that purpose. It is also, um, uh, legally protected. So if there ever is a clawback or some sort of legal dispute that is segregated for that purpose and cannot be touched as well.
Great, that's excellent, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
I had a feeling you might. Go ahead.
So, um, years ago, we were, um, at a funding ratio less than seventy percent. And, um, as the, the board considered that. And, uh, decided to do some discretionary, uh, contributions, and I believe. Uh, on this report on page twenty-two, it shows that we've made twenty-seven point six million dollars. And the number's not as important as the effort to, um, uh, make those discretionary contributions. And then, uh, we've made mandatory unfunded liability payments totaling a hundred and three million dollars. Over, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight years. And yet, our unfunded, uh, um, obligation ratio has dropped from eighty percent. Which at the time, uh, that we started making these discretionary funds, we thought, you know, a hundred percent would be ridiculous. Um, because there's a lot of variability, but eighty-five percent was, um. Probably a number that the, that the district could live with, um, and look good on financial statements. This statement, uh, that's applied here, uh, the unfunded ratio has dropped to seventy percent, so ten percent in one year. Um, I get it that the market valuation has dropped thirty million due to market conditions and so forth. But what, what I don't understand is, uh, why our liabilities, our unfunded, um, liability has, um, increased. What's, what's, what's the number? I don't have the number here.
It's on page twenty-two of the report.
It's, 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 the unfunded liability has increased. So, uh, you know, much, much greater than the drop in market value, and that's what I'm having a hard time understanding.
It's a really great question. If we, let me see if I can bring up the report and might give you a visual. Can we take this off this screen, that, the PDF document?
The PDF, Erica?
Thank you, Erica. So let's see, and Kurt, I'll try to take a stab at this, and then, um. If you have any additional comments, please, um, so I'll, I'll bring up the page that you're referencing about the, um, let's see.
Did you say you had somebody on the line?
Yes, Kurt Schneider, he's our, um, actuary from Calpers. He is able to join us today. So this graph here at the bottom is what you're. So this graph here at the bottom is what you're referencing as far as the unfunded liability and now the amount is a hundred and fifty million dollars at the seventy percent funded ratio. Um this is always a moving target, so one of the things, um if you notice, the liability went from the ninety four point five million to the hundred and fifty point one million. That's about a fifty five million dollar increase from one year to the next. Um if we go back up to page sixteen of this report. It tells us um what those changes were and the gains and losses of the valuation. The major change here was this uh fifty seven million uh fifty seven point four million dollar loss in investments. And the other major change was the six point um. What is it, six uh six point six million dollars in the non investment losses, and that has to do with our payroll changes. Um payroll assumption changes, um cost of living increases, retiree benefits being pulled in advance of um the anticipated. Um projections for retirees or retirees living longer and drawing down on um those retirement benefits for a longer period of time. Those two losses are offset by the unfunded liability payment that we made, it's on top here, this fourteen point seven million dollars. Um and then we also had uh some some additional interest losses, but. This page here, it it if you pull out some of these numbers, they tie back exactly to that fifty five point five million dollar change year over year. And that will continue to happen, the the fund will continue to have either gains or losses in investment um earnings. If we go back up, uh I think it's page before this, this one here. Um you'll see here, this was a negative six point one uh percent.
And so let me ask you about that, that's six point point one percent loss, but yet. On our market value assessment, we've lost sixteen percent, so how do those two numbers jive?
Uh Kurt, can you maybe answer that a little bit more, I know they're smoothing over years?
Um no, it's not the smoo- it's not smoothing, uh what it is is that the negative six point one is the return, it's less than zero. Fund lost money and we're expecting a positive six point eight. Um so it's the difference, so it's always the difference and depending exactly how you measure it, you're gonna get. Different rates, but you would expect just based on those two basic numbers. For the loss to be, you know, twelve point nine percent less than expected, twelve point nine percent of assets need to be made up with contributions. Uh one thing to note, though, is that if you look at the prior year, we had that twenty one point nine percent return and. Um this the decrease that happened in the next year was just kind of a. Uh correction from this kind of overblown uh high number, so you're looking at two funded ratios, you mentioned. The eighty percent and the seventy percent, but if you look at the history a little farther back, Carla, if you want to scroll down several pages. To where that funded history table is, you'll go stop, stop, stop. Okay. So on the bottom table, the funded ratio history, you see you were, you know, in the low sixties before you did that. Uh I think it was a twenty million dollar additional payment.
Correct.
Got you up into the high sixties and seventies, and then you have that one year, twenty twenty one, where you jumped up to eighty. And then back down to seventy, so it was really that eighty percent that was the nominally. Not today's seventy percent and looking forward a year, seventy, you know, one percent or something, um. So it's all a matter of perspective.
So I'm still trying to understand, uh thanks for the answer, I'm still trying to understand. If you're saying that we had a six point one percent loss in our investments. And yet, when I look on page. Uh come on, on page sixteen of the report. The um beginning balance was three hundred and ninety three million dollars in investments. And our loss was sixty four million under item three.
Yeah, that's the total loss, the investment loss was the fifty seven million, because. The other losses were from things like salaries higher than expected, retiree coal higher than expected, so that was significant that same year as well.
And Director Nelson, it's not only the six point one percent loss, it's that plus the six point eight expected rate of return, so it's actually a twelve point nine percent loss.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it as more like fourteen and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, we we can go through a little bit more in depth extras to kind of. Uh figure out, well, one 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 other thing is there is a another percent or so is the six point one. That we show in our report, that is what the Investment Office reported. Um is a preliminary number and it's a. Uh time weighted number that they use to measure their investment performance and the number that comes out later. That's a dollar weighted number that's used for financial reporting that goes into the act for. Uh that was actually negative seven point five, that's actually a probably a better. Uh thing to gauge by, but it comes out much later than our reports are prepared, so the one that we show and the one that we publicize the most is that one that the Investment Office reports. So that's part of the discrepancy that you're looking at.
Okay, and then so uh with that with that twenty million dollar investment. Um that we made in pre fundings, the unfunded liability, we're also making a mandatory unfunded. Um liability payment through through the program here, is that correct?
Yes.
And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, for the last eight years. Um I'm showing a hundred million dollars of of uh of funding that unfunded liability. And that was not required. Um eight years ago, that it this was just a requirement for the last, you know, let just let under a decade, is that correct?
It was always, it was always a requirement to make the unfunded, it used to be kind of. Baked into the contribution rate that we charged.
Okay.
Maybe you didn't notice it as much.
Yeah.
And and it wasn't as big as it is now, I.
Yeah.
Um you you I don't have to know you that probably, um so. Like these required U A L payments, you did mention, well, we'd like to be eighty five percent funded, that would look a lot better than where we're at and we were like, hand making a headway. Um but even if you were eight eighty five percent funded. Calpers would still charge your required U A L payment, because the whole thing needs to be funded, and a lot of what you're paying for now. Um is that all of the costs of the plan are kind of. Assuming that as people work and earn service, contributions go in and they they match. The contributions are enough to pay for the benefits that are being earned. And two things that you're paying for in the unfunded liability payment. Well, when we don't earn the assumed rate of return, the employer has to make that up. So we assume that earn six point eight percent, if we only earn six, the other point eight gets charged to you through unfunded liability payments, that's. That's one thing that I think everybody understands, the other thing is, well, when you're less than a hundred percent funded, we're assuming everything's in there, right? You're basically being charged interest on that unfunded liability. So six point eight percent of this unfunded liability, which is in the hundred and fifty million dollar range now. Um is a a lot of money, that's just being being paid. Because the fund can't earn money on funds it doesn't have.
So with that being said, we have a greater unfunded liability amount. Why why is our contribution going down uh fifteen basis points um when our liabilities are increasing?
The required contribution?
Yeah, our required contributions are going down from eleven to ten point eight five.
Um. Eleven to ten point eight five.
Um it's on page four, um we continue to send the eleven percent. Is this the page you're referring to, on page four?
Okay.
Yeah, there it is right there.
Oh, um okay, so when one thing that happens. When you make the big additional contribution, it reduces your unfunded liability, and then that would also. Make a big reduction in your required payments, um and then you would never, and then the, you know, the increase in the funded status. From the additional payment would kind of wear away, you'd just wind up back in the same place, so. When that was initially done several years ago, we tried to keep those contributions up, to keep you on that trajectory towards a hundred percent funding. Um and that's kind of been, that kind of wore off, so now we're back to this lower minimum required contribution. Very long time period to get fully funded and everything is.
So that wearing off is that um that's an interesting term. Wearing off, is that a discretionary choice that we're making to pay a lower premium?
Um yeah, you can put it that way, yes, I would say yes, you can you can, you know, this this. Number can, we can make adjustments to the amortization schedule to give you a more stable. Uh payment from one year to the next, or more stable contribution rate, whichever way you want to look at it.
So so who's making those, who's making those discretionary uh decisions or providing input? Uh with Calpers to uh adjust those amortization schedules?
So that was initially done when the twenty million was paid, I worked with Jeffrey Keel and he had a uh. Consulting firm that he worked with and they worked out uh strategy and I worked with them to.
Right.
Uh kind of make those adjustments.
And it seems like since then, has has anything changed since then in terms of our direction?
Yeah, Rick, Rick had a different approach, he he wanted to go kind of return to. Just keep the Calpers required payment as low as possible and then he would do um additional payments. Uh depending on budgeting and 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 uh whatever to get to the same place, right, it doesn't matter if it's part of the. Required U A L payment or additional payment, it's all going to pay down the same unfunded liability, so that approach works just fine too. Um need a little longer tenure from your finance directors to actually make headway though.
Right, right, right. Okay, yeah, that falls on Carla now, yeah, so I I I would just like to bring up that. That I I was not aware of a policy change that we had in the retirement funding, you know, that that Rick made a change from. With the direction that um that we had taken when we paid off, you know, paid in twenty million to this and I. It was my understanding that we were going to continue on that progression to reduce unfunded liabilities of the district. As they can, you know, um I think they're on our balance sheet, are they on our balance sheet?
They are reported in our financial statements, uh and Director Nelson, I think the one change that I'd like to maybe incorporate is more transparency with those additional discretionary payments. What was happening before is that this amortization schedule that you see on the screen here was being amended prior to this report being issued. With that additional discretionary payment built in to the um the minimum U A L payment for the future fiscal year. Um I would like Calpers to continue to do their report and then us decide how much to send an additional discretionary payment and how that impacts this amortization table. So right now, the projection is to land within this ten year range here that's on on the screen. With the additional discretionary payments that are budgeted, and so we would continue to do that and continue to have some sort of increase. Year over year in the U A L payment based on our um payroll projection increases. If we continue in that trajectory and we can meet maybe ten to twelve year mark to pay down the liability, assuming all other things are. Constant, right, the rate of return is correct and payroll projections are correct, we could save about forty three point seven million dollars, that's noted there at the bottom. Right hand of the screen, and I think that's what Rick's objective was, just to do it in a more transparent manner without. Changing these amortization tables directly with Calpers and without your input as a board.
Okay.
Carla, um a quick question, I I probably should know this, but does the payment come from one fund or is it come from a combination of funds?
A combination of funds, yes.
Can you just quickly name those funds?
It it would be all of our enterprise funds, um I don't know the exact percentage, but we can certainly get that information to you.
So based on payroll, like canal, domestic, uh stormwater, all that?
Uh can I can I get a breakdown?
Yes, we can certainly.
There's a standard breakdown, I think domestic is the highest contributor. Thank you.
Yeah, just as a uh last comment, I mean, from my perspective, you know, trying to get up to eighty five percent is is a reasonable, I I think, goal. Uh you know, last year I had high hopes that, you know, we were at eighty, um it's kind of interesting when you do look at the that. Rate of return, uh if comparison to the six, the the loss of six point six one percent. Um if if you took kind of those same numbers over the years, you know, the the fifteen year average is seven point five. The ten year average is five point seven, and then I did a Trump average at seven and a Biden average at six point six. So it's doesn't vary very much, but uh um anyway, uh I I my uh. My um I think goal in, you know, trying to understand this, it's. You know, it's the actuaries, the smart guys who do all the work here and understand it very much, you know, I I don't. Um purport to understand a a lot of this, but um my goal still has always been to try and get. To a about a eighty five percent unfunded liability number. Yeah, that's a fair goal.
And for clarification, would you like to do that within only the Calpers investment report, or would you like us to explore a section one fifteen trust in combination? To sending additional discretionary payments to Calpers?
So if if that is a methodology that gets us to where we can, you know, do the the. Side calculation that gets us to that eighty five percent, I'm I'm fine with the trust, yeah.
So we'll have to bring back a one, we'll have to bring back the one fifteen.
I'm interested to learn more about it, I mean, I. I'm not thrilled with these investment returns. Um if it could diversify our, you know, baskets of where the. Dollars are that can earn, you know, maybe that is beneficial, I mean, that Calpers already has, you know, several hundred million dollars in there.
Yeah, I agree.
That's exposed to these numbers, you know. I mean, honestly, it's a huge amount of. Investment that has a lot of potential, because it doesn't have the same restrictions that we have with our own general funds.
Regarding the the additional payments and and you mentioned more transparency to. Imagine make more pa- make a bigger payment when we have the money, make a lesser payment when we have less money and still trying to hit that target. I think you mentioned, maybe we've kind of been doing that already, but it was baked in and. And and your hopes is that you're gonna bring it to us to make that decision, I I appreciate that. What what's your sense on what the play is with that, is it sometimes we can make extra payments of five million, ten million, is it that big? Just trying to get a sense of the wiggle room.
This year, I believe it's six, is a six point seven million extra that we budgeted. Um it just depends on what the minimum U A L payment is going to be, and we also want to monitor what our anticipated cost of living increases are. We also had a class and comp study this year, which is why we suggested maybe doing a little bit higher than just the three percent. We did a seven percent um increase over last year's contribution was the the budgeted amount. Um so it'd be something we'd analyze every year, we could work with Calpers directly. Um as Kurt mentioned, the new report is already due to come out in August, so they're getting our current um. The year that just ended our fiscal year, and they'll be using the those numbers and those payroll amounts and retiree amounts. To then give us a report, but until August of twenty twenty five for then fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. So you're always kind of two years behind, and so um you'd have to kind of monitor this on an ongoing basis. Um really continuously, the other thing Calpers does is they have what's called an asset liability management cycle. So every um is it uh every three, three to four years, um they every three years, sorry. They do a full analysis of their mortality rates, their rate of return, um all of that can change, um. Um, the assumptions as well and the liability within the report. So CalPERS, I will say to their credit, has done a much better job. I remember fifteen years ago, this report might have been eight to ten pages long and now it's about thirty pages long. Um, and they have had more transparency on their side as well as to how things are calculated, they're available, they're accessible. Um, I asked Kurt on Thursday to join us and he's here today. Um, and so they, they really are trying to, to be more transparent as well. But that also leads to us asking more questions, right? Where's our money going and what's happening to the money? Um, so it'd be something we'd have to monitor continuously. The other opportunity we have to highlight the liability is when we do issue our financial statements in the fall, in November of each year. Where we can tell you what that, um, the reported amount is within the um, the financial statements. And that would include if we set up a section one fifteen trust, the amount um, in that trust to offset and the, the funded ratio with the adjusted amount.
Carla, if we, if we take action in December on the one fifteen trust, how, how soon thereafter would we see blended returns?
How soon would we see monthly returns on?
So we have to go through the process of setting the trust up and then thereafter, when does it kick in?
It, it would be immediate, so it would be an immediate investment and immediate return and we'd get monthly statements. And we would include that within our fiscal, this current fiscal year twenty four, twenty five financial statements. Those reach, that amount when the section one fifteen trust is not necessarily reported to CalPERS directly and so. The opportunity to see what the impact of the combination of sending additional discretionary payments to CalPERS. And then also having the section one fifteen trust would be reflected in our financial statements of the district.
Okay, thank you. Right, right now, out of the OPEB one fifteen trust, any withdrawals from that come to the board for approval? Or it's part of the budget process?
Budget process. We have about uh, five hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're drawing down. We drew down. Um, it was five hundred eighty four thousand dollars last fiscal year. Uh, sorry, fiscal year twenty two, twenty three and for twenty three, twenty four, we'll be drawing down hundred, about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we're anticipating that the returns can give us one more year, which is why it's budgeted for next or this current fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Again, that's something we'd have to monitor and figure out. Um, can we still maintain about a ninety five percent funded ratio with drawing down on that OPEB? The reason that we started drawing down on that trust is because it was super funded. It was over a hundred percent funded. And you also can't have that because if you're over a hundred percent funded, then you could lose um, the, the one fifteen trust. Um, tax um, oversight.
That, that one's been performing really well.
Yeah.
And I believe those returns are about an eight, eight and a half percent. Which is what, why I think we should explore that for a pension.
I agree, I agree, yeah, yeah. Hey, with that, uh, I would uh, uh, move approval of the payment of a lump sum of ten point eight million. To uh, CalPERS uh, for unfunded accrued liability. I'll second.
Good, thank you.
And that includes requesting staff to come back with a section.
Yeah. Yes, yes. And Kurt, thanks a million for joining us this morning.
Uh, you're very welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Just as long as we get credit for the million. You're thanking him a million. Thanking him ten million. All right, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Passed by though.
Thanks Kurt.
All right, uh, this gets us to written communications.
We did not have one in the original packet, but I did distribute a copy to the board. Um, should be on, on the dais and then it will be added to the record as well.
Right, thank you. And uh, and then we have a, what seems like it might be a large information presentation here. Carla, you again?
Sorry.
Yeah, all right, this is on the, the ERP.
Yes, this one we're really, really excited about. We've had a lot of great momentum over the last year. I know we talked about the ERP and where we are in the process during our uh, budget study sessions. Um, although you're hearing from me again right now, um, I do have our other executive sponsors here, Luis Masia. Um, our information services director and then also Scott Brewett. Um, from the operations and customer service side that can answer any technical questions that um, you might have or that I may didn't need assistance with. Also in our esteemed audience is our review and selection committee members. We have seven total, included myself. We also have subject, subject matter experts and our proposed steering committee members. All who've had, um, played a big role within this, um, to get us to this point. Um, also online and here in person, we have representatives from Workday, Sprite Point, Alight. Um, and SDI, our consultant, um, partners who helped us issue the RFP and do the initial gap analysis for the district. I'll try to be brief, I, um, maybe fif- ten, fifteen minutes at the most, um, and then we can have any Q and A, you can stop me at any point in time. We really want to give you an overview of why we need a, remind, remind the audience and ourselves, right? Why we need an ERP system and a utility billing system, brief history of the project. Uh, the recommended contracts uh, that we are proposing to bring back to the board in August. Um, the proposed products, the workflow, some workflow examples of how district props, processes would change. With the implementation of these new systems, what is the cost and what is the implementation timeline? So why do we need a new ERP system? I think I mentioned this before, but the ERP system we currently are working on is the first one that I learned when I started working in government. Eighteen years ago. So, so it was designed in the nineteen eighties. And although I have, uh, had the pleasure of relearning how to use the system, it is quite antiquated. Um, there is no planned development uh, for the current system. It has very minimal support. It's gone through several um, changes in ownership. Uh, the district implemented what was then HTE in two thousand and eight. Um, it's also sometimes it's been called Sun Guard and Navi Line Central Square today. And so you'll see different iterations of these names throughout, um, our different uh, directions that we have are. Uh, within the district. So by the time that we implement a new system, we would have had the current system for nineteen years. The anticipated um, go live date for a new system would be in twenty twenty seven. The implementation costs that were reported um, in two thousand and eight were seven point three or seven point four million dollars. If we fast forward those costs to today's cost, it would be about ten point seven million dollars. So about a three point three million dollar increase in today's dollars. And we'll tell you um, how that compares to the proposed cost um, in a future slide. Um, we also have very burdensome third party writing, re- report writing platform. It's called Cognos. Um, one of the things that were highlighted during our evaluation process is that. We probably have ten people within the entire district that can write a very good report for us. And so that means there's delays in us extracting data, finding reports, tweaking those reports. And it would certainly be nice to have more people be able to run their own reports at any point in time, have automated reports. Um, be able to filter reports more easily with a new system. We also have many cumbersome and manual processes that are very time consuming. Um, often requiring that duplicate data entry or overnight processes in order for one process to be completed. So an example of that would be when we're onboarding a new employee, it takes two or three overnight processes in order for the employee to be able to clock in. And record their time because of the data transfers that are required with an overnight process from one system to the other. There is no real time bidirectional communication between systems. And so um, it's kind of frustrating when you, we've got to go back as supervisors and amend the time and add the time and the. New employees confused that they can't, um, you know, clock in and out, but we're asking them to clock in and out. Um, so that's a good example of just a, a delay in process. Another good one would be when we're installing a new meter or a new address within a um, to service, to provide service to a new address. That also takes several overnight processes. I believe it's three total. One to put in the address, have the address flowing to the new system from the GIS and then another to install the service line and update. And then another to install the meter and, um, and update. The meter number itself is inputted several times. It's inputted um, by the, the technician that's installing the meter. Um, and it's a manual entry. That manual number is written and that manual number is then keyed in again by the utility billing, customer service representatives. So lots of room for error, lots of duplicate data entry, very cumbersome processes with the current system. All of which will go away with a new system. Staff is really, really excited. So the new system goals is to be able to have um, more standardized reports, as I mentioned. But also the ability to have future effective dates. Um, and that would allow us to test billing before new rates are implemented. Right now, um, we can't do that until the actual rate goes live. We do it at four thirty in the morning. There's all sorts of cutovers and as a system is down and, and it would be really nice to be able to have a test. Um, to be able to test those rates, make them future effective in advance of them being implemented. Uh, less manual data entry processes. This speaks to the heart of accounts payable as well. I mentioned the meter installations, but. Accounts payable has a very manual process. Um, invoices come in through the mail, they come in through email. They're dropped off at someone's desk, they're routed around um, different facilities. Then their, their, their print form, they get scanned and then they get routed electronically for signature. And then once they're signed, they get printed again um, with those signatures and they get scanned again into the system after they're paid. And there's data entry at the point of coding and then also data entry at the point of entering the invoice into the system. A new system would allow there to be a vendor management portal where the vendors are able to submit their invoices. There's AI generation. It can capture invoice numbers, totals. It can even have routing in place. If I am XY vendor. Um, this requires Jim's approval. It requires, um, you know, uh, Scott Brewett's approval or whatnot. And that would all be automated within the system. That's allowing staff to not do all of that administrative manual routing process. If Jim is out, the system will recognize he's out and it will be routed to um, his alternative person to be able to sign off on that. Avoiding any delays in payment processing. So something, a, a new system would be able to provide us as well. I mentioned system integrations, our big one here is Next Gen. The proposed solutions have already integrated with Next Gen and have other um, clients. That use this five point Workday and Next Gen configuration. And so that was a big key component for us. We want to make sure that we're in it not disruptive to our operations team. And that um, Next Gen continues to be supported and that the data again now becomes bidirectional real time. Versus an overnight process between those two systems. Um, what else do I want to mention here? We want to minimize those third party systems whenever possible. We explored which systems we could eliminate. So some of the systems we know we can eliminate with a new implementation would be Execute Time, which is the payroll timekeeping system. It's a separate than our current uh, financial system. Eventually our Cognos reporting system, the I series, which is um, outdated backbone software. Uh, minimize the use of NeoGov or reduce the use um, to, to then utilize the Workday software more. Uh, Ever, Everbridge, which is a notification system that could be replaced with this five point notification system. And uh, then also Monarch, which is another reporting software tool since the data is so cumbersome. We actually have two different ways of extracting uh, reporting data from the current system. Uh, the other item to really highlight here is, is the bottom uh, internal and external customer service portals. Especially with utility billing, uh, we mentioned the vendor management portal where vendors not only could submit their invoices, but they were able to track their payments. Uh, in real time, where are they? Have they been approved? When has it been issued? What is the check date? Um, without um, them having to reach out or, I mean, if the companies reach out to us, but it would empower them to um, see that information on their own. And then for utility billing, there would now be a portal for all uh, customers, not just the utility billing customers, but also the rack customers. Canal customers would have more um, transparency and oversight and also the IWA customers. We get a lot of calls um, regarding their, their balance and what is due and um. Their reporting also comes in very manually through emails um, or, or the mail and so that would all be able to be done online as well over time. And step back and just talk a little bit about the project history. It is detailed in attachment three. So this process started way before I um, started here at the district. So in two thousand and nineteen, SDI did a gap analysis where it was identified that we should really explore this as a district and figure out if. If and when um, we can replace the current ERP system. We issued an RFP to um, gain propos- to request for proposals in July of twenty twenty three. This was uh, my number one priority when I started here as a controller and a couple of months later we would have issued that. We received ten proposals. And it took us about three months to review those ten proposals. In uh, doing so in December of twenty twenty three, we decided to go ahead and extend um, demos to three different vendors. So three different vendors were onsite in February of twenty twenty four over a ten day period, eight to five. And then the review committee also met from about five to six PM each one of those days. Um, the three vendors, we had two N four vendor, uh, and so N four was not the selected. Um, uh, software, but that was the other vendor that demonstrated and the reason they had two demonstrations. It wasn't full product demonstrations, but they had two different implementation approaches uh, to their product. Uh, and they had submitted two separate proposals and so we went ahead and extended a full presentation for those uh, implementation. The different implementation perspectives. Uh, after this, we, we knew we had a preferred vendor, but we wanted to make sure the vendor could deliver on their product. So we had follow-up meetings with staff virtually or and in person um, in March. At the end of those meetings, one of the comments, one of our biggest concerns was the canal billing. It's, it's so complicated, it's different. And um, at the end, staff told, um, let's five point oh, it's fine, you can come do the billing next month. You've got it. It's programmed, um, you understand our business processes and so that made me feel really good to under- that they knew and they understood and they took the time. Um, during the demos, they also showed us and programmed the tiered rate billing, which is also a concern of ours. We wanted to make sure, of course, that that was accurate, um, and that the program could um, carry that forward. Um, and so once we got to that point, we started contract negotiations, started to discuss the terms, the pricing, the scope. Uh, we worked with BBK, making sure that all those terms and conditions within the master service agreements and the contracts themselves. Were appropriately aligned and acceptable for legal review. Uh, we are here today giving you an overall um, review of the, the proposed solution. And we're anticipating to come back with contracts in August. So the recommended uh, contracts and products are three different ones. So it'd be three different contracts. One is uh, with Alight. Alight would be the implementation consultant for the two solutions. Workday would be the financial solution and Sprite Point would be the utility billing. Uh, customer service system solution. We went with the best of breed, recognizing that N four did have a comprehensive solution, but it wasn't um, as. Sleek or um, I'm not sure what the right word is, Luis, but it wasn't. It wasn't as, as good as, as a Workday Sprite Point solutions. The company overviews for each one of these companies is included also in attachment two of the staff report. Um, Alight at a, I'll tell you a little bit about each one at a high level, but Alight started um, implementing Workday solutions since two thousand and eight. So they've done several implementations. They have a solid team. Uh, they were actually sitting in the seats where you're sitting at today. Uh, for four days in May to again assure us that the scope within the contracts was appropriate. Um, and reflected our needs. Um, Workday has a global presence. You've probably heard some of their ads um, within some of the larger broadcasted networks. They have clients that include Netflix, Amazon and Bank of America. And as a matter of fact, Eastern Municipal Water District is also looking to issue and finalize contracts with the Workday solution in the next coming, um, in the coming months. Uh, probably also in August. We've been working very closely with them on um. Aligning uh, or recognizing that we are going to have similar implementations and trying to synergize. Those implementations so that we can both learn from one another. On Sprite Point for the utility billing, they provide utility billing solutions for not only water, but also electric and gas utilities. So they have a diverse portfolio of customers, um, certainly able to expand and utilize those as well in the future should we need to. And uh, as I mentioned earlier, one of the big um, things that stood out for them is that during those demos, they actually programmed their system. And tweaked it and showed us how the tiered rate billing would work and the canal ordering and billing would work as well. Uh, the other point to mention here is that the two systems that are proposed are both cloud-based platforms. With about an eighty percent off-the-shelf configuration, uh, twenty percent customization. And the twenty percent would be limited to kind of those nuances of the water. kind of those nuances of the water district by the tiered rate billing, the canal billing, some of the, the different rates that we have. Couple more slides. The proposed products include everything that we can possibly gain from these systems. We want to fully implement any and all efficiencies that we can gain from the system. We, for the financial system, it includes accounts payable, accounts receivable, general ledger, procurement, inventory, fixed assets, project and grant accounting. The budget platform is currently in Excel. It would be incorporated within the Workday solution if approved. And then the human resources and payroll solution includes the recruitment, onboarding, benefits, time and attendance and actual payroll processing. Land management includes planning and engineering functions for development purposes. And then online assistance and online communities would be available for ongoing maintenance and support.
Is that, is land management under the Workday one?
Land management is under the Spry Point.
It's under Spry, okay.
And then again, I mentioned the real-time bidirectional system interfaces that are really highly desired so that we can make real-time decisions. Another example, that would be inventory control. There's again overnight processes required to know what inventory is available. If you had real-time bidirectional communication, that would be much more efficient for staff. And then on the data conversion and storage, we are proposing to bring over two to maybe five years worth of data depending on the, the data platform payroll might require a little bit more data. But we are proposing to bring all historical data over in a kind of a phase two approach after go-live using software called Prism that is included within the Workday package.
So you said five initially, five years?
Two to five.
Two to five.
So recognizing like on the financials, we might only do two. And then we'll take about two years for implementation. So we'll have two additional years. So we'll have four total by the time we go live. I already spoke about most of these with the exception of this mobile workforce. Spry Point and has a, a mobile workforce where our field staff, excuse me, is able to utilize their iPads and cellphones in order to complete work orders and fulfill customer requests very efficiently. Workflow examples. Again, we talked a little bit about automation, how things could be rerouted to individuals. The vendor portal. On the budget side, I'll mention that we could have several versions of the budget, which we currently do, but they're in Excel in a very delicate, huge file that takes a while to open up and we're always afraid it's going to blow up on us. But this would allow us to have several iterations of that in an electronic format that then can, can be culminated into a final product with data entry available by the actual managers and directors. On the recruitment, I'll mention too that the data, when I'm applying, if I'm applying for a job within the district, the data that I enter would then be able to be transferred onto my final employee record without there being, needing to be additional data entry or duplicate data entry done after the fact by staff. And so that data would carry forward within the records is another example of efficiencies. And then the time and attendance would be within the Workday system, not a separate system as well. The other big function that, that both platforms provide is a dashboard. So a customizable dashboard based on the end user's profiles that allows them to highlight different work functions or approval processes that are pending within each system. Talk about cost.
Carla, can you go back?
Yes.
One slide, please. I just have a quick question.
Absolutely.
The, the work in, in planning and engineering and plan check, I, I would be interested and hopefully this would not be the case, that what they're planning to do is not going to complicate or create additional overlays to delay the process and plan check and engineering, which, you know, sometimes can be, can be complicated currently. So that would be one area that I'd be particularly interested in seeing to make sure that there's efforts made to create more efficiency.
Absolutely. And the, we are anticipating to keep Masterworks, which is the, really where their domain lands. What happens here is that we take in the, the payments for the deposits and we reconcile those against the workflow. But the proposal is to keep Masterworks and then to do some integration and bidirectional communication there as well in order to make that more efficient and more transparent and maybe honestly, the, the deposits within the system now are a bit cumbersome to manage. So the new system should be.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah. Noted. So I mentioned earlier that the two thousand and eight costs were about seven point four million and we fast forward that the cost in today's dollars would be about ten point seven million. The implementation costs are one-time costs that are noted at the top of the screen. For Alight and Workday, these numbers are nice and round because they are subject to final, best and final offers from both vendors, which we are currently negotiating. And it also includes the CBWD project management. We have a, an RFP currently out. It is due or deadline for submissions would be July seventeenth. And we're anticipating that those costs would be about two point five million dollars. Maybe a little bit less now that, with that we have compressed the implementation timeline. But within our budget, that's how much we have estimated. The Alight Workday implementation cost would be about five million and the Spry Point would be about three million. The hours are noted to the right there. And for comparison purposes, one full-time employee at the district is two thousand and eighty hours. So Alight would be proposing about twelve full-time employees. Spry Point, six point five and then project management may be seven. Project management would help us to actually implement these. So we mentioned that Alight would be the implementer working with Workday and Spry Point. But they, they would be working with us as staff and then also with our consultant for project management. So they are, would carry forward the actual implementation and make sure that we meet our goals and our timelines and monitor the budget. Make sure that we are being delivered what is promised within these contracts. We have other full-time work that we will continue to have to do. And so we recognize we need some additional assistance there. The annual subscription costs, we're proposing to come to you with a ten-year term for both of these contracts. The Workday cost would be about six hundred thousand dollars annually and Spry Point would range from about seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. Again, we are still working on the final cost for, for all of these estimates.
What is our, what is our annual subscription cost for what we have now?
Currently, it's about four hundred thousand dollars for just the financial system. That doesn't include all of the other systems that we're proposing to replace and it doesn't include the IT support or the I Series cost. And I don't know if Luis wants to add anything to that.
All light, they don't, there's no monthly for all light? Cause that's.
It's an annual subscription, not a monthly and.
It's a cloud service. It's not a non-performing solution for both. This is also replacing the canal system, which is a homegrown application that we're not paying for. But in any other scenario, you would probably be paying two, three hundred thousand dollars just for that alone. And there are other applications that run in the I Series that we have built in-house that otherwise you would have to pay them somewhere or somehow. And so there's a lot of costs that is legacy costs that is not being tracked. And so it's reflected here. So though, I think doubling what we pay for, it's extremely reasonable, you know, getting a new technology, updating all of our platforms, putting it in the cloud, creating a new strategy for protecting from ransomware and things like that. Boosting security on the systems, decentralizing everything, meaning when you have everything on print and something happens like ransomware, they can take you down really, really easy. This way is a good strategy because systems are managed separately. And so there's a ton of gains for the district. Obviously efficiencies, but security. I even think, I think cost effectiveness is not this good, so. Any other questions?
So the implementation timeline, I know you've heard in the past four to five years. We have been debating over that for quite some time. The the concern with doing it too long is that people lose momentum, they don't make decisions quickly enough. These systems are designed to again have an eighty percent off-the-shelf. And so we were just doing the ten, twenty percent. It has a lot of AI testing embedded within the system as well. And so Workday and Spry Point believe that we could really go live by November of twenty twenty-six. A full go-live. We do recognize that parallel implementations, because we'd be doing both at once, both the finance system and the utility billing system. It's going to be disruptive. There's no way to gently put that. It's going to be time-consuming. It'll require staff's input, testing, training. It'll also require change management and our, us being open-minded to reconfiguring the way that we do things and asking vendors, for example, to take advantage of the vendor portal and in order to really gain all the efficiencies that are available with these new systems. We'll be re-engineering current processes to figure out how they now configure within this new system. But we do have solutions and we recognize that that will happen. And so again, we want that third-party consultant that, to help us manage the project itself. We have had end-user input from day one. So all of the end-users, most of the people that are in this room have participated in making this decision. They are well aware of what we're getting into and they have committed themselves to making this a successful process. For a lot of our employees, as we're developing our goals for this coming fiscal year, this is one of their goals is to support this implementation because it will impact everyone district-wide. We have also built in some slack or contingency within these timeframes in order to give us maybe a week or two in between different implementations. If we're ahead of schedule, we'll keep going and we'll continue to have that buffer. If we're behind schedule, then we'll have to make it up in a, in a future timeframe. We have also taken the time to clearly define the implementation resources that we have and that we expect from the vendors. So again, even though we're negotiating a best and final offer, we don't want to reduce hours if we know we're going to need them. Recognizing that we have our own staff limitations internally. We have included staffing support also within the budget. So we have half a million dollars budgeted for this year in case we need either additional overtime or we need external staffing. Again, recognizing that we might need some expertise in data conversion or quality control within this project. And so the budget would continue to include some additional staff augmentation budget. We have a proposed steering committee and those members have already volunteered to take on this project and be a part of the process. And as I mentioned before, we also have three executive sponsors. And of course, our general managers and assistant general managers support in, in getting this implementation completed. That concludes my formal presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions or have our esteemed audience members, including our representatives from Workday, Alight or Spry Point providing additional commentary.
You know, it wasn't clear to me, you mentioned the integrations and all that. Are the two systems, Workday and, and Spry Point, are they going to talk to each other?
Yes.
All right. I wasn't sure about that one.
And I believe there's an icon within each screen, so you can seamlessly connect to both without really having to log in and out of the, the systems themselves.
Jim, you're happy with all this?
As soon as I get my mic to come on, I'll be able to answer. I'm extremely happy with how staff has engaged in the process. It is absolutely something that needs to be done. It is always painful. Having gone through them now in two prior lives, it's very disruptive. But there's no alternative. What, what I'm extremely impressed with though is how staff has taken ownership and involvement in making sure that the product they will ultimately have to work with is one that.
They chose.
They're okay with, absolutely.
I know. I mean, ever since I've been here, I've been hearing about this. That there was a little bit of pushback from you, I think, when I first got here and I think they've, they've won you over and.
We had some other initiatives that we were focused on and I didn't want. Recognizing that this was going to be consuming. I wanted to make sure we were able to finish up on the other ones and make sure they were in place and working and beneficial before we got started on this.
Carla, I have a question on the cost. The implementation cost in the, in, in this deck is about ten and a half million. One of the other attachments we had in here was sixteen million. So I'm not quite sure where, where, if there's, I'm not quite sure what the real costs are.
Great question. The sixteen million is what is budgeted within the CIP, what was estimated within the CIP budget itself. It does include the annual subscriptions. So since these are cloud-based and they'll be ready to utilize and semi-functional from day one, the, and this is something we're still working out again as part of our cost is how much do we pay for the annual subscription from day one as we continue to do the implementation? So it's a different approach with these softwares.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that explains it. Thank you.
I guess I assumed you'd start the subscription once you go live.
So did we. Luis, do you want to?
Because it's a cloud service, we start using it right away. We start consuming the resources from the cloud. They have to pay for that. So as soon as we sign the contract and we, they start working on it, we have, the subscription starts.
But we're also running in parallel.
That is correct, yeah.
So while we're still surviving with the old system, we've got to bring the new system to life.
And obviously, this, these are new technology, cloud, these are native cloud solutions unlike the typical ERPs that are, were highly customizable, very easy, very hard to implement. These are, one of the directions from the general manager was we want off-the-shelf, ready to go. So the district can adapt to these new processes and not try to keep doing what we're doing, right? So modernize, implement a new digital transformation. And I, I think this is a good model. And the technology will lead the district into the next thirty years, so.
Luis, I, I have a question. Allrite and Spry Point, so who are their competitors? Would that be like Oracle and, I mean, how, where do they stand in the, in the industry sort of?
Yes. So Workday is an ERP system, a Spry Point is a utility billing system. There are systems like Oracle, SAP, N four, Calienta, there's, there's a number of them. But our, and, and they have very competitive systems in a way. One of the things that we looked at obviously was cost, the direction that we had, where we don't, we don't want a highly customizable system. We do want a system, we put all the requirements that the district needs and Workday and Spry Point were able to meet those requirements with very little customization, except for the canal. The canal Spry Point would actually have to write something for the district because it's unique to us. And so there are other systems. Some like, you know, Oracle, twice as expensive to begin with, just to start. And then whatever you're going to customize, right? SAP is the same. All their systems are potentially slightly less expensive, but they're more, they're not as agile and flexible to do things. And the other thing that we really like about specifically like Workday, it's, it was, it was built by former Oracle engineers with all the knowledge and now they have an actual native solution that is specifically designed for the cloud. One of the things that we noticed is that a lot of companies say, we have a cloud solution. They're still built on legacy technologies, they just put the servers online, right? And they start charging you for that, but the technology is the same. So because we know that this is going to be a long-term investment for the district, we want a modern technologies that also work well with our other new technologies like Next Gen, like Masterworks, like Vimentis. Because the district now has a cloud-first strategy, that is our goal every time we buy software. We don't want to have those systems in-house if we can, except for the SCADA system. So that is our goal, cost-effective, modern, easy to manage, you know, yes, accommodating to what the business needs are, but not highly customizable where we never get this thing off the ground. And that is what we put together and what we ended up with with everybody's input. Obviously, we have to still go through the process and make it work, but it's going to be challenging, but you know, challenging, accept it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So one of the concerns that I've, I've heard.
So one of the concerns that I've I've heard, I've been through this with a number of other public agencies that I've served on, is that there has not been adequate training provided by the vendors in the transition. So are those costs built into the budget numbers or is that additional money?
Yes, and then unlike all their systems, Workday and Spry Point are uniquely different in that they get the system up and running with the data we have and they start training day one, right? We're going to be actively training. We're not going to develop all this. And then, you know, year three, we start training, right? We actually, they actually grabbed the data from us. They build the the system based on the requirements we put together and we start testing everything. So it's basically uploading data, testing, 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 making adapting the system to or rather us adapting to their new processes until we go live. And so that is the difference that we're going to be training from day one.
Excellent, thank you.
One of the other items too, the systems allow for videos to be programmed within the system to show people how do I enter a purchase order? How do I record my time? How do I enter a project number? And so the system is able to, we're able to program those once with with the training and development within the system and then we're able to edit that in the future as well. But the cost does include training in person and virtually. It also include change management support, recognizing that we would need that as well.
Let me just add one more thing. I've been in other companies where employees, the customers, our customers are hesitant to implement new technology, right? But the I there's a lot of support from district staff to do this because the frustrations exceed the amount of effort that will take to do this. Again, when you're dealing with an eighty year technology, it's very hard to get anything done. You know, a lot of times we're very accommodating, but a lot of times things take time. You know, again, case in point with the canal system. It's built in RPG, right? It's worked, but we don't have an actual portal for outside. It's still on green screen, you know, it's just it it it's run its time. And so when we want, when staff needs new technologies to work in everything, a lot of times we struggle. And so they rather go through this process and end up with, you know, something modern that the district can benefit from.
Yeah, okay, good. Good presentation, thank you.
Thanks to all involved. Really appreciate it.
Next is Board General comments, Director Nelson.
Just to note that California Legislature just passed the Conservation is a Way of Life bill. And so it's coming out with a lot of new conservation targets for urban areas. It's good to note that Coachella Valley Water District has some requirements coming up, but in two thousand twenty five, it's a zero percent. And then at two thousand thirty five, it's eight percent. And so, you know, those numbers don't hit us as hard because we've done previous conservation programs that are recognized in the system. When you look at some of the other valley agencies, desert water agencies in the thirty five percent range. And then, you know, there's all across the state, they range from zero up to thirty five percent. Actually, up to about forty five percent. So there are some cities going to hit get hit real hard. So that that's good to know that CBWD's put in a lot of work ahead of time. So that seems reasonable for us. The other thing, Robert Chang's not here, but I keep seeing in different publications, he's getting awards around. So at some time, we ought to recognize him here. Maybe we have. And then IID has come to, I guess, agreements with USBR on their conservation programs that have come out. And those are through two thousand twenty six. So there are a number of programs on farm conservation, seasonal fallowing and so forth. And so that's out on the street as well and of note to us as well. So that's all my comments.
No comments. All right, thank you. Yeah, I'll pass. I'll say it's hot out there. That's my comment. So do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Nope. Onto the meetings, June twelfth. We had Cyrus and some member Garcia meeting with Director Estrada.
Yeah, that was probably a meeting that we had. We had several meetings, like this might have been the last one to try to get some sort of direction consensus on how to proceed with our efforts to try to get a bill in that would give us more flexibility on how to address Chromium six. It was a last minute attempt. I think there was a lot of good effort, I know that. Our staff, Scott, you you reached out to a lot of folks, you were coordinating a lot of this stuff. I think you did amazing job. It was last minute. But it seems like it wasn't doable for a lot of different reasons. And we might be thinking about how to approach it again, starting the new the new session. So that was that meeting.
We had a June twenty six Coachella Valley Irrigate Lands Coalition meeting. I think Director Nelson was there also, right?
Yeah, if you could add me on that.
Add him on there. Actually wanted to talk. I'm going to have a conversation with Jim Barrett about some of the things we discussed separately. I don't need to do it here. But maybe I'll mention it later. Yeah, I know. Same day, there was a sewer projects, Meca COD campus, interesting. Director Strong.
Yes, so it was almost, so we had a similar meeting with with COD. Their new president, I believe, last name is Hope, President Hope. This was earlier in the year. They were revisiting a project that was proposed back around two thousand eight, two thousand, around that time when there was an idea that the Meca campus was at one time proposed to be a campus that could house or for a campus for about, I think they had two scenarios. One scenario was five thousand students, another scenario was about maybe seventy five hundred students. And that was something that was being considered in two scenarios. One scenario was that that the campus would kind of carry the project and COD would carry the cost of the extension of the infrastructure to sustain that project. At that same time, there was another project around the area called Panorama. And there was the the scenario where Panorama would would also participate in the expansion of the infrastructure, primarily the sewer. And so that Panorama never happened. The COD campus never really expanded. And the district and COD have had conversations about, very minimal conversations about about you know, how that project would move forward. And they kind of died for for a while. And I think that the meeting that we had earlier this year with with President Hope and her staff was to try to revisit that. We gave them some direction that the hydraulic models that were done back in two thousand eight were were old. There's obviously been improvements in the area. And we suggested it that if they really, if this was something serious that they were pursuing, that they could start with with updating those hydraulic models and we told them how to do that. So that that meeting happened, I think, earlier in the year. And then we had a request to have another meeting. And this was a combination of folks. I think they understand that to extend the sewer service to the Meca campus. It requires, I believe, a mile or so of pipeline. And I think we gave them projections that they might be close to ten million dollars. I think that's what they think it's going to cost also. And so they, I forget the title of of the person from COD, but I think she's in charge of I think her name is Carolina. She's in charge of pursuing grants on behalf of COD. And so she called for a meeting. She wanted the supervisor's office to be part of the meeting, the congressman's office and our agency to start talking about what it would take to try to get some grants or money to to make those improvements. And so that was, that's what the meeting was about. We suggested that if the congressman was open to finding some a budget. We said maybe half a million dollars to maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the planning to to kind of get a project shovel ready. Then we thought that might be a good start. And so that's I think that's on their court to to try to come up with that money to to put the project together. And then hopefully go after the construction funding. We did share with them that we have made a lot of improvements. We we've over the years have secured grants that have, I think, created a lot of benefit in the region that without our involvement, the cost of the improvements for COD or any other type of project would be a lot more, right? So we've already, we've already made a lot of investment in the area that I think this project or any other project would benefit from, including the improvements that we're doing at the well that serves Meca. That was a combination of funding between us and the county. We're upsizing that lift station in Meca also, also something that we were able to do with the county. And so what we're saying is if you can help find funding, we certainly would be open to figuring out what we could do so. So that's what that meeting was about. I'm hopeful that we hear more about it, but that that was the conversation.
Where are we? Sultan Sea Authority, June twenty sixth.
That was a super fast meeting.
A really quick meeting. It was designed just to 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 elect officers for the new year because we could not generate a quorum at the last meeting. So IID Director Docstetter was elected chairman of the authority and Vice President Estrada. Avriano Estrada was elected, reelected Vice President. And we had two other position treasurer and secretary whose names I forgot were reelected. And that was, sorry?
Wasn't the Riverside County Supervisor?
Yeah, Gutierrez, I think, moved to
Secretary and Supervisor Kelly is the treasurer again.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good. June twenty seventh, we had a two on two with two by two with City of Cathedral City. You want to do that one, John?
Yeah, just real quickly. It was a fairly extensive meeting. We had agendas prepared by both districts. Cathedral City brought a host of staff. Mayor Carnavale was there along with Councilman Gutierrez and city manager, the city engineer, the assistant city manager, among others were there and of course, our team. And we went through the usual topics, went over the the information that Jim generates in his report, water use meter installs, et cetera. But most of the meeting was taken up by the city staff presenting a pretty extensive development report on new activity there and shared with us that there were about five hundred new permits that were currently pending. So there's a lot of activity going on in the city. We also talked about assistance with their their efforts to clean up some of the homeless problems in the in the canal. And John, anything else?
In the channel, huh?
Channel.
Yeah. No, that was a good, there's a lot happening in Cathedral City. They they laid out quite a story for what's what they're doing over there. Amazing. Thank you. Additional meetings, I know we had yesterday, we had a Agua Colante Principals meeting in Rancho Mirage that went for four hours. And some stayed longer. Any other meetings?
On July second, I I attended a section five contractors meeting for California. Just discussions, you know, as you know, we've got the one point five million acre feet of savings in the lower basin and with the environmental reports that need to get prepared, that probably needs to go up to another two and a half million. And it's strategizing on how to work with the upper basin on that number.
Is there a motion to approve the meetings reported on per DM?
So move.
All in favor, say aye. Passed by vote. General Manager report.
Nothing today, sir.
Counsel.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to mention real quick a couple of US Supreme Court cases that I'm sure you've read about in the paper and how they apply to CBWD. One is the Chevron deference case, which was entitled Loper Bright versus Remondo. Chevron deference was a theory based on a previous case that said if a statute's not clear, the court should defer to the regulators who are who are drafting the deregulation to interpret that statute. What the court said is no, the role of interpreting statutes is with the courts, not with the regulators. And so that was a major change in terms of the authority and deference to regulatory bodies. How that impacts this district is obviously in the realm of federal agencies and federal interpretations. There's been some discussion that that Chevron hasn't really been used that much recently and that the courts have stepped in to interpret statutes and not defer to the agencies. But now this makes it makes it clear for the courts moving forward. The other case is Coroner Post versus Board of Governors of Federal Reserve. This had to do with the statute of limitations for challenging administrative regulations in the federal government. The rate, the statute of limitations to challenge is six years. But there could be a challenge of the facial regulation as then as the regulation is applied to you and your company, for example. The courts previously said that there's a six year statute to challenge this, the actual law or regulation at the time it's adopted. The US Supreme Court said, well, that's not fair for companies that come into existence after the regulation has been adopted and is being applied and it's and they challenged that regulation. It's a pretty detailed case talking about the accrual of a statute of limitations as opposed to an adoption. Some federal laws say, all right, you got a six year statute from the time it's adopted. But if it doesn't say that, then it's going to be six years from accrual. And accrual means when a company or individual is impacted by that regulation. So it extends the statute of of limitations to challenge administrative actions at the federal level. Well, once again, this applies to federal rules and regulations. As you know, the California has its own set of rules that do not, are not impacted by these federal judgments. But we'll see how this goes moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have any department reports?
Mr. One, I see a hand rising and a body rising.
Good news?
Introduction, introduction.
I just want to introduce Tom West. He's our new Assistant Director of Sanitation. So I think most you know, operation and maintenance is broken down into three groups. Chad Austin manages facilities and maintenance, has about a hundred and forty. Ruben Rivera manages domestic and about a hundred and four. And Tom's going to be managing our sanitation group, which which is about eighty five people. It includes our collections of wastewater, our treatment of wastewater, our mechanical maintenance of wastewater, the non potable water system as far as to the golf courses and our Palm Desert replenishment and our control room. So he engineer. and our control room. So he um, engineer, uh, University of Maine, uh, twenty years in Connecticut, uh, has also spent time in Chicago, Florida, and California. So he assures me, picked a great week to start, first of all.
How you like the weather?
He assures me that ninety-seven and humid in Florida is very similar to a hundred and fifteen here, but I just wanted to introduce some really happy. So I just wanted to thank Fran and HR for helping us find uh, Tom. It's been a long time coming and I'm really pleased to have him aboard. Just wanted to.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Alright, I assume that was it for department reports?
I see nothing else.
Uh, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items shown on the agenda and then we will reconvene and report out.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, well, the regular meeting is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action and with no further business, we are adjourned.